Good evening, welcome to the July combined work session for the Newton County Board of Education. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to actually amend the agenda.
Okay, go ahead. Ms. Coggan would like to amend the agenda?
Um, let's see, I'd like to add item P. And that is about school nutrition. Item Q is the superintendent's contract and under the old business flexible, the contract for flexible creativity.
Okay. Flexible creativity. Okay, Ms. Coggan is amending the agenda on their old business. She would like to place flexible creativity and under new business adding the letters P for school nutrition and Q for superintendent contract. Is there a motion, I mean a second for her amendment?
Second.
It's been moved in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
To move.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coggan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's reports?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, good evening. In the financial report, the Newton County School System's ESPLUST 5 distribution for May was $1,308,153, which is an increase of $83,647 from last month's collection. The average for the first five months of ESPLUST 5 collections is $1,217,801. The title Ed Valorem collection for May was $347,704. And finally, the Business Services Department has begun the process of closing out fiscal year 2020. As part of that process, we accrue July and August tax collections into the year as well as July and August payroll expenses for 10 and 11-month employees. The final ending fund balance will be available at the October board member. Madam Chair, that completes the financial report.
Okay, thank you. We'll take these both together. Strategic plan report?
Good evening. Under student achievement and success, special education staff led by Kelly Gugliata, behavior specialist, painted several sensory walks in schools in the district during the month of June. Cousins, Live Oak, Oak Hill, Rocky Plains, and Indian Creek all received their sensory walks. However, the largest sensory walk painted this month was at Veterans Memorial Middle School. Under high-quality workforce during the month of June, upbeat staff conducted individual consultations with each principal to review his or her respective engagement survey results. Culture, climate, and communication. In partnership with Newton County Juvenile and Family Courts, NCSAS hosted a virtual summer program for 25 students. Each student was provided a Chromebook with Internet access and a Pearson Kinesis license to participate. Teachers worked virtually with students to provide remediation and enrichment activities. Ms. Kim Reed worked diligently with proposity donors to secure back-to-school packs for each student. Mr. George Hutchinson, school social worker, delivered boxes to each student. Each pack contained an assortment of grade-level appropriate school supplies. These students are excited to return to school. And finally, under organizational and operational effectiveness, student services personnel completed the revision of student registration packets, developed an updated preregistration process, and provided guidance and support to school registrars in the areas of scheduling and enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree.
Welcome.
Is there a motion to move the superintendent's reports forward?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Coggan. May I have a second from someone?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Floor is now open for questions, concerns, or discussion. Are there any? Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, four zero, thank you. Under old business, we have the flexible creativity. Are there any board members? This item was tabled from our June meeting and in our tabling, we were specific in the wording to place on the July 21st meeting. Are there any board members that would like to pull the item from the table? Okay, having none, I'll move forward. New business, item A?
In item A, the superintendent recommends the board adopt a tentative budget for fiscal year 2021 for all governmental funds to be advertised in the newspaper before the approval of the final budget on August 18, 2020. And we've participated in a budget review meeting and the tentative budget is there for your review. And that concludes item A, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Item A, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, then move the properly second. Floor is open for discussion on item A. Okay, having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Any, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item B?
In item B, requested board action relative to setting the millage rate and this follows three millage rate hearings. The superintendent recommends the adoption of the fiscal year 2021 millage rate as follows. M&amp;O millage rate, 19.788 mils. Debt service millage rate, zero, for a total millage rate of 19.788. The M&amp;O millage rate may not exceed 20 mils by law. For fiscal year 2021, the millage rate for M&amp;O will be 19.788, which is more than the rollback millage rate of 19.031. The debt service millage rate will remain at zero mils as we use ESPLUST 5 funds to pay the principal and interest on our general obligation bonds. The total millage rate, again, is 19.788 mils. And that concludes item B.
Okay, is there a motion for item B?
So moved.
Been moved by Mr. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggan, discussion. Okay, I'm gonna provide discussion for the viewers right quick to make it short because I'm pretty sure what Dr. Barr just read, they don't understand. So basically, the millage rate, we've had three hearings on the millage rate by law and so the proposal for the millage rate is to stay the same at 19.788. So it was 19.788 last year, which was a rollback rate that we did when we went to 19.788. There is not a proposal of an increase for, but for the rate that remain at 19.788. Now, the value of your home may have increased. Those increases or assessments are done by the county. So if the value of your home increase, then that means your school tax will increase even though we left the rate the same. So just wanna make sure everybody understands that, but 19.78 is the recommendation. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item C?
In item C, the superintendent recommends the approval of a spending resolution for August 2020. And the spending resolution is there for your review, and that is item C.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for item C?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, is, I have a move by Ms. Coggan and second by Mr. Bailey. Floor is open for discussion. Okay, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, four zero. Before I called on item D too, let me go back to item A 'cause I probably should have clarified that for the viewers as well. So item A was on the tentative budget. We did have a budget meeting. My days are running together.
Oh, I think it was a week ago. Yes.
Last week Tuesday?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday. So I want anybody to think that we're just moving through these without discussion. We had a budget meeting last week Tuesday to actually go through the budget. Okay, thank you. All right, so item D?
In item D, the superintendent recommends the 2021 Newton County Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Program Improvement Local Plan be approved. In accordance with the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, each eligible school system shall submit an annual local plan application for career and technical education. According to the Perkins Law, federal funds are now tied to the date that the school, the local plan is approved by the local Board of Education. Board approval will allow for these funds to begin being used during the 2020-2021 school year. This relates to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and the plan is attached for your review. That is item D.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to move D forward, followed by a second, please?
So moved.
Okay, I'll take Ms. Coggan and Mr. Johnson for the second, thank you. Floor is open for discussion. Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item E?
In item E, the superintendent recommends the approval of the purchase of Iowa assessments for youth in elementary and middle schools. The assessments will be administered during the month of September 2020. The purchase amount is $293,500. As background information, Iowa assessments are used in grades one through eight for the purposes of measuring student performance relative to criterion and norm, and norm reference standards. This purchase will allow the district to measure student growth as required by Senate Bill 364 and provide college and career readiness benchmarks. Iowa assessments serve as the universal screener and are also used for placement test purposes and gifted identification. These assessments will also provide the district with valid and reliable data to measure instructional effectiveness. This relates to strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. The funding source is the FY 2021 General Fund. Upon approval, function 2100, object 610. And that is item E, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion for item E?
So moved.
Okay, I'll take Coggan, I couldn't get it out, excuse me, Coggan and Johnson. Okay, for item E, the floor is open for discussion. I do have a question. So the kids, so have Iowa already announced how they would administer a test for the kids that are choosing one of our virtual options?
We have the ability with the Iowa assessments, the full suite of products they provide, to administer virtual.
Okay, okay, that was my only question. Just wanted to make sure that before we invest in something, that it would be able to be done virtually.
Assistant Baker?
Yes.
What was the response? I didn't catch the response.
She said that, okay, she said, Dr. Jordan said, "We have the ability to administer the test virtually."
Okay.
Basically, yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
She added some more wording though, Trey, so. But that's made the answer, that we have the ability to do it. Okay, thank you, Dr. Jordan.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, four zero. Item F?
In item F, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract for Internet content filter software be awarded to Family Zone Incorporated of San Diego, California. The effective date will be July 1, 2020, and the expiration date will be June 30, 2021. The contract value is $44,321.66. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Contract is there for your review and as well as the funding sources outlined. That is item F.
Okay, thank you so much. May I have a motion for F?
So moved.
Okay, been moved by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggan. Floor is open for discussion. Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, four zero, thank you. G?
In item G, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. The first is Instructure, which provides Canvas Learning Management System. Total cost is $77,681.31. The second is ByteWorks, which is a maintenance agreement for Cisco Infrastructure. The total cost is $51,274.48. Third, Filewave, a technology asset management software. Total cost $67,209.84. And finally, Bridge Tech Solutions, which is a network and email security software. Total cost $75,525.28. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Contract documentation for all of those items are attached for your review as well as the funding sources are outlined, and that is item G, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. May I have a motion, please, for G?
So moved.
Okay, Johnson, for the first movement?
Second.
Second by Ms. Coggan. Okay, floor open for discussion. Having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, item H?
In item H, the superintendent recommends the Chromebooks, laptop computers, and accessories needed for the school system be purchased from Dale Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas. The total cost will be $1,797,297.18. The school system will utilize a State of Georgia contract to procure the equipment and accessories. The items and their associated costs are represented there for your review. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Contract documentation is there for your review and the funding sources are outlined as well, and that is item H.
Okay, item H on the purchase of Chromebooks. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and second. Floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Bailey?
Because we're using some CARES Act, Act funds.
That to Dr. Thomas, who is prepared for that.
Good evening. Using the CARES funds, we will use $599,955 to pay for some of the devices.
Questions? Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. I is next.
In item I, the superintendent recommends the laptop carts needed for the school system be purchased from CDWG of Vernon Hills, Illinois. The total cost is $47,595. The school system will utilize a contract managed by the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies, a national purchasing cooperative to purchase the carts. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success, and strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Purchasing documentation is there for your review and the funding source is the digital learning grant funds, function 100611. And that concludes item I.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for I?
Aye, second.
Second.
Wait a minute now. I'll take Mr. Johnson for the initial movement and then Ms. Coggan for the second on it. Okay, floor is open for discussion. Okay, having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. J?
In item J, the superintendent recommends that technology needed for the non-public schools be purchased from Dale Marketing LP of Round Rock, Texas. The total cost is $61,065. The school system will utilize a State of Georgia contract to procure the equipment. The schools, items, and their associated costs are represented in the table below. The purchasing documentation is there for review and this is a requirement, as you may well know, for the CARES Act funding, function 1000, object 616. And that is item J, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion for J, please?
So moved.
Okay, been moved by Mrs. Coggan. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Johnson. Floor is open for discussion.
Yeah, come in.
Madam Chair, I had a question.
Okay, I'm gonna take Mr. Johnson first, Mr. Bailey, and then I'll come to you.
Could we have not just issued the funds for this transaction instead of the purchasing?
No, sir. The guidelines that set forth by Georgia Department of Education clearly state that the physical agent is the school system and we actually own all of the equipment. So we have to act on behalf of the private schools. So we do, you know, we work with them, have a plan, make all the purchases, work with them to utilize the, the items that have been purchased in the appropriate way. And we are, we as a school system, serve as the physical agent.
Are we reimbursed any for our activities doing this?
Well, there's been conversation with Georgia Department of Education to have those funds that have been set aside in the CARES Act that's the proportionate share for private schools to be reimbursed back to the district. But I know it's been a conversation, but I have not seen anything yet that says specifically that those funds are going to be, you know, refunded back. But now, with any federal grant, there is an opportunity for private schools to participate with the school system and receive their proportionate share. It just depends on the purpose of the grant and whether the private schools want to participate based on the grant's requirements.
I understand clearly about the prior two, but because this is CARES, I didn't see any less well. We would be refunded for our efforts. And add to that would be how the inventory is controlled here. Who's the owner when it comes time to inventory? How do we show that elsewhere without being held accountable for it?
Well, we would be held accountable, but we also hold the private school accountable. So from the Title I office, the inventory would be conducted the same as it would be in any of our regular schools. And so Dr. Kenny, who's the Title I coordinator, she will facilitate that process and work with the private schools, set up the inventory checks in the event that items are lost, stolen, or damaged. We follow the same process that we have for those items in the, you know, within our school system. But again, we are responsible because we are the physical agent that receives the grant. And being the physical agent, the superintendent signs off on the entire grant. So that makes the district responsible. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did, but I, I, you know, who am I to disagree, but I do disagree.
Okay.
You know, no reflection on what we're doing, but I think we are doing work for.
Know a lot about the process.
Well, actually, any of the schools, the private schools within our geographic area, they have the opportunity to inform the State of Georgia that they want to participate as a partner with Newton County. And so there were just two schools, well, actually, it was three schools that were interested, and the school district, myself and Dr. Kenny, we had an initial consultation meeting, shared with them the guidelines that were provided to us from Georgia Department of Education. And then from that meeting, there were two of the three private schools that chose to continue to partner with Newton County and secure items as it relates to what stipulated that can be purchased with the CARES Act. So again, any of the private schools within our geographical area, they have the opportunity to participate. It is just a matter of whether they want to participate or not, and do they wish to follow the guidelines that's associated with that federal grant to receive the items based on the purchases.
Dr. Thomas, how did the, how did the, I'm asking this question, I know the answer to the question, but just tell us how the, the private schools know how to get involved?
Oh, okay.
What do we do to notify them?
Well, with the private schools, first of all, all of the private schools, we, they have to send us what is a DE 1111 form that shares which students live in Newton County and attend a private school. From there, we have a roster in the district of all of the private schools within our geographical area. Then, all of those private schools received an invitation from the State Department through our platform in Infinite Campus. So the invitation was sent out to all of the private schools, letting them know, here's an opportunity, CARES funds are available, this is what the CARES fund, the program is about, here are the stipulations. If you would like to gain any additional information and to see whether this program would benefit your students based on, as a result of experiences with COVID-19, then talk to the Newton County school system or whatever school system the private schools are a part of, and then start that initial consultation process.
I have, I have a question. Mr. Bailey, are you finished, or you have any more? You're finished? Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Because my question is actually, when Mr. Bailey said how this schools vet it, and I know, Ms. Fury, you just asked about how the schools were informed, so the schools do have actual students, and I'm only asking this because one of the schools I'm not even familiar with, and I'm familiar with a lot of areas in the community, so I look at this and I say, well, do they actually have students? I actually had to Google to see where they were. So do they have to prove that they have students?
Absolutely.
They do have to prove that they have students? Okay.
And that's with that DE 1111 form that we receive back in the district and that.
With the roster?
Right.
Okay.
And then one other thing, back to Mr. Bailey's question about vetting, there's a criteria for the private schools to meet in order to even partner with any school system. They have to be nonprofit, they have to submit an annual attendance to the Georgia LEA, they have to establish that they were in existence prior to qualifying for the emergency CARES program. The, the private school should be previously, well, it doesn't matter whether they previously declined any other federal programs, and the religious affiliate private schools located in the LEA are eligible to receive services. So again, there is a criteria for the private schools to meet, because all private schools are not nonprofit. I think that's the biggest thing that comes up with nonprofits.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Thomas. Any more questions? Okay, having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Wait.
Reluctantly four.
Okay. Four zero. Yeah, because your vote came during the opposed, so, okay, four zero. All right, K?
An item K, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts awarded to the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. The first is Osborne Electrical Contractors Incorporated. Estimated contract value is $125,000. The second is Air Conditioning Specialist Incorporated. Estimated contract value $450,000. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Contract documentation is there for your review as well as the funding source. Madam Chair, that is item K.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, been moved by Mr. Johnson. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Coggan. Floor is open for discussion. Having none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item L?
An item L, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract with the Newton County Board of Commissioners and the Newton County Sheriff's Office for School Resource Officers be renewed for an additional contract term. The effective date will be July 1, 2020, and the expiration date will be June 30, 2021. The total contract amount is $1,099,575.30. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and strategic goal area three, culture, climate, and communication. Contract documentation is there for your review as well as the funding source, which actually should be CARES funding. Is that correct? Right, it shows, it shows something else.
Oh, okay.
But it should be CARES funding where it says funding source.
Okay.
And that is item L.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for item L?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved and second. Floor is open for questions or discussion.
I just want to verify whatever, this is a CARES expense?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. I was looking at another report CARES about protection, but go ahead, I won't hold out. I'll fall off on the side. Seems to be a conflict in my mind. Go ahead.
You want me to go ahead with the vote?
Yes.
Okay. I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, four zero. I'll move back, I gotta echo. Item M?
An item M, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. That is, deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness. Items are there for your review, and that is item M, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for M?
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved and second. All in, oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, four zero. N?
An item N, the superintendent recommends the local board governance annual report be completed as required by the Georgia Department of Education. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational, operational effectiveness. Training report is included for your review, and that is item N.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for item N?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. Floor is open for discussion. You guys should have the calendar, yeah. We don't have to make a decision today, but you guys should have a calendar, so just look over the calendar in terms of training. We have to have six hours together.
Three.
Three hours together. I'm about to put y'all, put us together.
You'd like to spend time with us, but.
Three hours together.
I like those allocations.
So make sure you look at, just think about when we want to have our training, and then keep in mind if we don't do it fall time, then we'll have a new board member coming along springtime, if we choose to do it spring, and so that person will need to do the three hours with us if we wait this. The calendar is in here for this updated training.
Mr. Bailey, you don't have it.
2021.
Oh, I'm sorry, you don't have the calendar. So we'll be sure to get you the calendars so you can start looking over topics.
Okay, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All.
Okay, thank you. I got your, I know it was a delay. You can't oppose this one, it's required, so. Item O?
An item O, the superintendent recommends the approval of personnel matters as discussed in executive session. That is item O.
May I have a motion for item O?
So moved.
Okay, I'll take Ms. Coggan and Mr. Johnson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four zero. Item P?
Item P, the superintendent recommends the milk and ice cream needed for the school system be purchased from Mayfield Dairy Farms LLC of Athens, Tennessee. Estimated contract values are $600,000 for milk and $35,000 for ice cream. This deals with strategic goal area four, organizational and operational effectiveness, and the purchasing documentation is attached for review as well as the funding source, and that concludes item P.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Barr. May I have a motion for item P?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and second. Floor is open for discussion. Having none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, four zero. And item Q?
Do you want?
Oh, you can go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion to extend the superintendent's contract for one year, so it would.
Oh, you don't have to make a motion. Um, because item Q is, because contracts are, because it's handled in executive session, so you don't have to make a motion. So item Q, you can just say related to the superintendent's.
Just contract, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, and I'm sorry, so item Q, I make a motion in.
No, 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 no.
No, no motion, okay, I'm sorry. Item Q is the superintendent's contract.
Mm-hmm, so the ending date now changes to?
To June 30, 2023.
Okay, thank you, yeah. And just to clarify, to help people understand, personnel matters are handled in executive session, so because the superintendent is personnel, we discuss that in executive session, so we actually don't make motions or discuss it in public, and that's by state law, you guys. So the board has, the contract now is June 30?
June 30, 2023.
June 30, 2023. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other matters of interest?
Just a question, please, on, back to item whatever it was, but anyway, the K-9 doctor we had, we didn't have, we didn't utilize the service of it, and it was totally the service of the sheriff's office. Did we get any concession, eligible any concessions because we had no use for that?
No, so what we tried to do was make, to incorporate the sheriff's department, sheriff's office into the work was going, that was ongoing, still ongoing, like for serving meals and those kinds of things, helping with laptop distribution, those kinds of things. So we tried to change the scope of the work a little bit so that we were still receiving something for the money that we were paid.
Understood, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other matters of interest?
I'm sorry.
Have we voted, did we actually vote on item O, requested board action relative superintendents?
We did.
We did, okay, I'm sorry.
It's just out of order, because normally that's the last item.
I'm just going through my list, I want to make sure we did.
Yeah, normally it's the last item, but we did.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, just a, just a quick update, given the COVID and opening, reopening of schools, and we, we ask that our parents make a selection between in-person instruction, virtual instruction, and within the virtual, you have school-based virtual where the teacher will be live in a classroom, and then our self-paced virtual program where the, where the highly motivated, focused children would be working on, at their own pace on the assignments and work that would be provided through Edge Annuity, and with the support of teachers and staff monitoring and supporting them. And just to give you an update, we, we still need to collect more information from our parents, so our principals and staff at schools will be calling families. I believe we are approximately 12,000 students, off the top of my head, we know, and of those numbers, about 4,000 are requesting in-person, about 6,000, almost 7,000 are requesting virtual, and then another roughly 1,800. And again, the numbers probably won't add up, I'm just calling them off the top of my head, they are looking for the self-paced option, and so I just want to, just to say that those options are, are still out there, and that I am working closely with the health department, and I will continue to talk to Dr. Arona, and if there is a shift that's necessary, we will not hesitate to, to make that shift. We're watching and communicating, and I recognize that, that folks have, there are, there are folks out there who are struggling to make decisions, and teachers who are feeling uncomfortable about returning to the classroom, and we have processes in place to try to mitigate those circumstances, and we, and I completely understand that the health, safety, and well-being of our students and staff is our number one priority, and we're doing everything that we possibly can to meet the rules and regulations as established. Who are looking at the in-person option, and we're still not done looking at it because it, you know, if, if only 15 kids request in-person at one particular school, it doesn't make financial sense to open that school to serve those 15 students, so we may have to make some adjustments from that. But I think I wanted to make clear to everyone that, not just me, but I think our entire board, we are together on this topic when it comes to the health and safety of our students, and if we have to pivot to a different decision, I think that's what, what we need to do as a, as a group of administrative leaders in our, in our community. And we are struggling through and working hard to ensure that we do the very best for our students, whether they select in-person, virtual, school-based virtual, or our virtual platform, while we all know that the research clearly points to in-person instruction is the best thing for our kids, but safety, it has to be done in a safe environment, and so everybody is nervous about what's going on in our community and the transmission rates, and so I want to assure everyone that I'm a part of this community, I too have a child in the school system, and I want the very best for everyone's children. I want my child to be safe as much as I want everyone else's children to be safe, and if a decision has to be made, it will, it will be made, and I will communicate it, and of course, with the board obviously support, and then we will communicate it far and wide if we have to, if we have to pivot and change course. But I felt like, given the environment that's out there right now, it might be important for us to just calm, everybody calm and take a deep breath and just know that we're looking at everything that's available to us to make those kinds of decisions. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other matters of interest? Having none, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.